Springdale School Board Meeting to order. I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening and joining us at this time. If you would stand, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like I said, thank you for being here. We know it's, everybody's really busy, summertime, vacations and all that stuff, so we appreciate you guys joining us tonight. We're going to start with the reorganization of the Board, which we do after elections. Board, it's been the practice to change our seats every two years, we're one year into that cycle, so I will entertain a motion to...
I will make a motion to leave things the way they are for one more year. Second, make a second.
Alright, I have a motion by Mr. Hutchinson and a second by Mrs. Cook to approve the reorganization of the Board, which is not reorganizing anything.
Current Board seats.
Current Board seats, they'll stay the same. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That brings us to item C, which is the discussion on school board terms, going from four-year, going to either a four-year term or a six-year term. You should have a printout that is a side-by-side comparison that shows each of our seats and when your election reelection would be, depending on the choice that we make. Kinder, do I need to add anything to that?
I think all you have to do is decide if you want to have a four-year term or a six-year term.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on that?
No.
No, I just thought you looked like you had something to say.
If no questions, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we move terms to six years.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Cook and a second by Mr. Hutchinson to move the school board terms to six-year terms. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Alright, that brings us to our agenda for tonight. Dr. Cleveland, are there any changes to our agenda?
Well, I do have a patron comment, we do have an executive session on the air to review circuit goals for '26, and so I think in a respectful comments, usually don't have a whole lot of patron comments, if any, and so just have the, have the condition of board, whatever board prefer, but I don't know how long the executive session may take, and I wouldn't feel right having a patron like that.
Yeah, we can move the patron comments prior to executive session if we, if everybody wants to.
I make a motion that we move patron comments before executive session and approve the rest of the agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Mrs. Creek and a second by Mr. Bell to move item J, patron comments, prior to item I, executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Which brings us to our consent agenda. If you have any questions or comments regarding item C, the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bell and a second by Mrs. Cook to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to presentation by Dr. Cleveland.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hutchinson. I'd like to invite Ms. Clay to the podium. Ms. Clay, we'd like to celebrate her, she's been offered the opportunity to be in NIET fellowship on her merit, so tell us what that is and that opportunity she's going to have throughout the year.
Sure, so through the National Institute for Excellence in Teaching, I was actually part of the Lead Teacher Designation Program this year, where I got to participate in professional development all year long, to just grow as a teacher leader, and then just learn more about instructional coaching and how to support teachers, supporting student achievement. And then after that, I was presented with the opportunity to apply for the fellowship program, which is the second year for it this year, and was chosen out of, nationwide I was one of 12 people chosen to participate. And it's just a year-long program where I'll get to grow as, as a leader, to learn more instructional coaching strategies, to improve student achievement in the, in my building and hopefully in the district. So I have a bootcamp in Scottsdale, Arizona in July, and then I'll get to shadow some NIET coaches regionally, as they work with other teachers and just grow in my practice and bring more to Southwest and to our district, so I'm pretty excited about it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good product.
Thank you.
Is the trip to Arizona really the only travel you have to do?
So, I'll go to Arizona in July, and then they said throughout the year I'll have up to five days of travel, but they said they want it to be where I can drive there and back in a day. And then I'll get, I will actually also get to present at and participate in the National Conference at the end of February, early March, so I'll get to travel where, last year I think it was in DC, so I don't know where it is this year, but I'll figure that out pretty soon. And then there's another bootcamp in Phoenix in June of next year, so, little bit of travel.
Great opportunity.
I'm excited, so.
Look forward to seeing what you bring back.
I'm excited to bring it back, and couldn't do it without our district, our instructional leaders at the district level, and then my leadership at Southwest, they're just so supportive, and couldn't do it without them and the teachers, and then it's all the students in our building, so, and in our district, so I'm pretty excited about it.
Good luck.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, I should know, it's, we've had some changes in administration, and seems like we did this to ourselves, we played Plinko, somebody moves to one place, then moves to another, but we call it cross-pollinization, so we've had someone move from Hellstone, and our great team over there, led by Dr. Byford, has selected Ms. Aurelien Senate. So, Ms. Senate, and Dr. Byford, if you're here too, why don't you both come to the podium?
Really, you should do the introduction of Mr. Senate. Even though I did that, what do you have in your thinking today?
Well, when we knew that we had to make a change, we knew, when I started talking with the teacher committee and the, and Ms. Harrison and just the leadership in our building, we knew this was a chance for us to get better, and there was just one clear choice, and so I 100% know that that's exactly what we did, we're already getting great ideas and, and he's making us better, so I'm thrilled to have Aurelien Senate as a leader in our building at Hellstone, so.
Thank you, Dr. Byford. I was afforded a great opportunity at DTSOI to grow and learn and serve a lot of students and staff there, and over my tenure there, I learned a lot, and I discovered a sort of passion in myself for middle school students, and living in Springdale, my children go to this district, very quickly, my community became Springdale over the decade that I've been here, and as I look around to my friends and neighbors in our community, you know, that feeder pattern means a lot to me, and so I have, I've had my eye on Hellstone for a long time, and so when the opportunity came, I think Ms. Harrison, who's here tonight, I was very open with her about my desire to work at Hellstone for several years, and so when the opportunity came open, I applied and was afforded the opportunity to take the position, and I'm just incredibly grateful, so, thank you.
You know, I saw Dr. Stueman in there. Where's she?
Oh, she's hiding behind, but Dr. Stueman is a longtime veteran here, Springdale, I'd say probably an icon in education now, alright, can I say that?
You can say it.
I can say it, I'll say it.
She's, she's written here, so I'd like for her to introduce her new assistant principal.
So, at Sonora Elementary, we had the wonderful opportunity to select a new assistant principal this year, and again, similarly, it was a clear choice. Naomi was serving at John Tyson Elementary and serving well there in several capacities, from teaching to then moving into an instructional facilitator role, and I know they hated to see her go. In the time that we, she has been hired, she has already attended the Innovation Rally and been part of our presentation there, and had a little time off last week while I was out of town at another training, and then today we've been in training at Hellstone for adaptive schools, so she has already just fit right in, a puzzle piece that fit right into our school, and has already as well been contributing in a big way, so we are thrilled to have Ms. Stueman join our team.
Thank you, Dr. Stueman. As a product of Springdale Schools, I'm really passionate about the district, I learned a lot at Tyson, but I'm so excited to serve the students, the staff and the community at Sonora. I'm already learning so much from Dr. Stueman, so I'm excited.
Thank you, congratulations. I know I saw Ms. Davis. There she is. Ms. Davis has been with us for a long time, but she's stepping into a new role, so Ms. Davis, would you like to talk about your new role?
Yes, absolutely, thank you, Dr. Cleveland. Going into my, this will be my 14th year next year in Springdale, so I've officially been in Arkansas longer than I was in Texas by a long shot, starting year 20 next year at KA Connect, and I'm really looking forward to just something completely different, but yet something very familiar with alternative ed, so spent years in Houston in alternative education, and of course, the past seven years at Archer, and so I'm excited to lead that program, grow that program. I've already sat down with Dr. Cleveland and, and talked about his vision for what this can look like for our district, our community, our region and beyond, and so I'm, I'm anxious to build relationships with families and students, to really see what new things we can do at KA Connect, so, excited, got the opportunity.
You've been seven years.
Yes, it has, I was at Harbor for six, and I've been at Archer for seven, so, yes, it has. Time flies when you're having fun, I guess, right?
You're going to miss those Archer graduations, aren't you?
I, you know, I'm probably not going to miss them, because I'm probably still going to have to go.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, I, I don't, I don't think I'm going to be able to miss them, it, it has certainly been a joy to be there, and I feel, I feel very honored and blessed that this responsibility's been entrusted to me, and I don't take it lightly, so, appreciate all of you and Dr. Cleveland and his team.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations, Davis. Thanks for taking all the time. Ms. Jennings, I tell you, we've had a great opportunity to highlight Sonora Middle School, but I'm not going to steal her thunder, I'm surprised that she didn't show a video for this. If you have some more video, if you follow Sonora Middle School on any kind of social media, they probably should win some Emmy out there. Trent, where are you? If there, if there's an Emmy award to win, they should win that, but anyway, go ahead.
So, recently, Sonora Middle School was designated as a model PLC school, and we, this has been four years that I've been at Sonora Middle, and a four-year journey, we were already doing the PLC process at Sonora Middle School, but thanks to just professional development and learning and reflecting, just seeing that we were doing PLC light, you know, collaborating, talking about lesson plans, but we, to move to PLC right, where we're really using student data to drive instruction on a daily, weekly basis, and just seeing results and celebrating those results, it's been a four-year process to get there. So this, this not only represents just improving our systems and our practices, but it represents three years of student achievement growth, so you, you not only have to show evidence of, of the work, but you also have to show evidence that you're getting results, you're growing kids, and you're doing it year after year, and so I do want to thank the Board and Dr. Cleveland for supporting the PLC work at hand, I know that you've supported us having the time and the school day for it, and professional development, things like that, all of those things have made a big impact on us getting this designation, so.
There aren't too many in the country that have your designation, do you recall that in the public?
Not total, but I do know that it's a, it's an international recognition, and there's only 171 middle schools in the globe that have the designation, so, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings, for your work. Then I have two small reports, one report I know you'll like, from, as you know, I'm on the Arkansas Activity Association Governing Board, I'm, I'm the Vice President, or Second Vice President this coming year, but we've changed Dragonfly for scores, so you'll actually receive a hard card.
So, I can get in now.
So, we'll get...
Since I haven't gotten to go to anything for a couple of years.
We'll give you a pass, and a Miss Paul's ten.
Yeah, I'm excited.
So, you're so tickled to get your hard card.
It's the little thing.
I am so excited. That made my day.
Now, if you choose to still do the Dragonfly, you should know, for those of you that don't like it, some of you may like it, for those of you that don't, we'll get you a hard pass, so, anyway, that, that is, I've been working on that for a while, so I'm glad to be able to report to you that we've been able to do that. But, you know, we've got a couple of members that rolled off that I really like up the Board. Dr. Kim Wilbanks was on the Board for a long time, and she's the Superintendent at Jonesboro currently, and she is a remarkable human, great thinker, have a lot of respect for her, and we're going to miss her, just in the whole public school world in Arkansas, as she's retired, but we're going to miss her on the AAA too, and she's a great thinker, great human, so, I just wanted to say her name, put her in our minutes, because she is a, she's a stalwart in Arkansas, and my friend, and I'm going to miss her. So, we keep losing people like her in the state, the state's going to struggle, she's a great person. Our President of the AAA also rolled off, Stephen Strachey, he's the head of Catholic School, he does the editorials in the newspaper on Sundays, if you ever read any of those, he's a great guy, but Kelvin Hudson from Flippin will now be the new President, and again, I've, I've rolled into the Vice President position. But at AAEA, I think you all know the new Director, y'all remember Megan Duncan, who used to work for us, so she's now the new Director of AAEA, we're really proud of her, she's going to do an excellent job, and we look forward to working with her, Dr. Smith was on the Board, he helped select her, and we're looking forward to her journey, I've been elected as the Secretary of that Board now, not sure how long that'll last, but I'll be Secretary for a little bit and then roll on, but we met at Magazine Mount, which I haven't been home in a while, that's where I used to live, it's on Magazine Mount, it lodged for a day and a half or so, so, anyway, I think we're in good hands, and the AAEA is a good association, and if one of us still want to make part of that, we'll be there. Those who have got to, were any questions? Alright, Ms. Davis?
This is for things to get done, yeah, for not care.
Good evening, everyone, I thought it would be nice to kind of give you a preliminary secondary summer school report for our data piece this month, and I will give you, as always, and so will Ms. Fink, we'll give you a whole summer school report, either in August or September, whichever agenda it works out best, with the end results from our, our summer programming, but just to give you kind of a picture of what all's going on in the world of secondary summer school right now, at Archer Learning Center, we have 67 students who are participating in 72 courses, which is great news, we have three additional Archer graduates, and we are hoping to have eight more additional Archer graduates by the end of the summer session, so that's very encouraging. For our Academic Choice Summer School, this is a summer school program that allows students who want to get ahead academically in various pathways to have opportunities to engage in summer learning, we have 374 students enrolled in 533 courses, I'm pretty sure that's a record for us, 97 of those students are using the entire summer to take year-long courses instead of just a semester, so of those 97 students, 90 of them are taking Computer Science, five are taking US History, and two are taking Algebra I, so I thought that was very interesting. Don Tyson School of Innovation also is running what they call Fifth Quarter, and that is to assist students who are close to proficiency, but just not quite there yet, and when I say proficiency, I mean close to approaching proficiency, the opportunity to, I guess, level up over the summer, so they have 26th through 8th graders that are engaging in a math and English skills camp, those are on essential skills, four 8th graders who are recovering high school health, which is great, and then 35th, 9th through 11th graders that are recovering various courses such as English 9, 10 or 11, Algebra I, Geometry or Algebra II, and World History. This year, for the first time, we did something really unique in our district, Harbor High School is hosting all of grade 8 through 12 credit recovery, all in their campus with their staff. Typically, we do a junior high program and a high school program, and we house it at one junior high and then at one high school. This year, Harbor and, and their team, they were like, we've kind of become pros at this, most of the 8th graders who are here, or the soon-to-be 9th graders are all taking the same courses, we're duplicating offerings, let's just offer it all at one place, thought that was genius, and so we have 489 students at Harbor daily, they are enrolled in 37 different courses, so 359 of those students are high school, enrolled in high school courses, and then 130 of them are enrolled in an 8th grade component of some type, and for those of you who are visual and want to see the numbers, when, at the end of summer, I'll give you a more comprehensive report of how it all washes out. Okay, my next item is a staffing update, and I know that you've already seen the new hire report, this is more just kind of a rundown of what happens when a principal or a director or someone in the district receives a retirement or a resignation, because it is quite an extensive process, and so we thought it would be good just to kind of give you a picture of how, in a district of our size, with over 1,800 certified employees, how that kind of process goes. And so in the new hire report, I'm sure you saw there were 63 new hires, something that I thought interesting, just in this past month's data, 32 of them are junior high or high school, and 31 of them are elementary or middle, so I thought that was really interesting, it's almost exactly split. So, a retirement or a resignation is received, then what happens? So first, Dr. Smith, myself, or Ms. Fink, we discuss the position that has been vacated, either with the building principal or with a director, for example, if it's a district level type of position, and the reason why we do that is to, first of all, determine if the position needs to be filled, if it needs to be absorbed, or if it needs to be switched to something different. So I'll give you an example, like if a math teacher, for example, says that he or she is retiring, well, a principal may look at their master schedule, and they may not need a math teacher, they may need a science teacher, so we're still replacing the position, but that, we call it FTE, their full-time equivalency, is shifting from one content area to another content area. This requires a really in-depth knowledge of every building's master schedule, and how multiple people function within that master schedule, so for example, the way I think about it is, in any given moment, including 2:00 AM, I have basically eight chess boards in my mind, I have the four high school, the four junior high, and sometimes even the middle schools to a degree, because, as you said, Plinko, I think earlier, pieces are constantly moving and shifting, and there has to be a lot of creative problem-solving within that process, and it's also reminds me of Domino's, like you just push one and then it goes throughout the summer. Additionally, funding for the position is discussed, so for example, is it district-funded, title, special ed, ELO, is it grant-funded, is it ESA-funded, so oftentimes, that includes meetings with Ms. Hopkins, with Kim Glass, with Shawna Lyons, like wherever the funds are flowing, we need to have a financial picture as well, because when someone vacates, we know how much their salary was, but when someone's coming in, that salary may be something totally different, so there's a lot of checking of funds. So, if funds are there, and the position is decided that will be replaced, then we have to determine if the position is special education, ELO, athletics, CTE, GT, or fine arts, then we bring in the corresponding Director or Coordinator into the conversation, so I'll give you an example. Anytime a coach resigns or retires, when the buildings are conducting interviews to replace that coaching position, either Coach Fimple, Coach Burnett, or Coach Wood are part, they are an active part of that interview process, so that we're all working together in tandem to ensure that we're not just getting the best coach, but we're also getting the best teacher. When a coach leaves a school district, it is very complex, because if someone is coaching a sport and teaching statistics, you're not just going to advertise a a sport and teaching statistics, you're not just gonna advertise a coaching position tied to statistics. But someone still has to teach statistics. And so you have to figure out how you can match this new coach coming in based on the best candidate's pieces of certification or whatever into your master schedule based on your existing vacancies or shuffling, et cetera. And that goes for any other position as well, whether it's CTE, fine arts, et cetera. So as I said, the building administration, in conjunction with the directors or the coordinators, vet a pool of candidates. They then conduct the interviews, and then they submit a recommendation of their top candidate to Dr. Cleveland and our executive team. Each recommended candidate then interviews with one of the superintendents prior to approval for hire, which means there is a lot of interviewing going on in our building all summer at any given moment. And then Dr. Cleveland has final approval of all hires. So this is a very extensive process. It takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of attention to detail. It takes a lot of studying. So you think one school, so for example, Springdale High School has 180 teachers. So we offer 260 courses in secondary. So thinking about that across eight different secondary buildings and how that works, and providing the necessary support to our schools is critically important. However, I will tell you, it is some of the best time ever spent. It is the ultimate bucket filler to be able to meet candidates and get to conduct interviews. And I will tell you, when you offer someone a position in this school district, it like, I can't tell you how many times I've cried this summer, especially like we have, like you met Naomi Guzman. We have, Melissa and I were talking, Ms. Fink, the other day. I think we're up to 14 of the new hires are all graduates of Springdale Public Schools. We are growing our own. And when you interview a stu, I keep calling them students, a young adult who grew up here, and you get to tell them that they get to teach here in this community that they're so ingrained in, and that they get to influence students the way that they were influenced by our teachers, it can be a really moving experience. We've had several first-generation college, first-generation degree holders, and the ultimate, like penultimate job for them to be able to call their families and say that they're a teacher for Springdale Public Schools. And so it's been a very rewarding process. And we just wanted to make sure and highlight the work that's going on here at our office. Okay, last item. Ms. Fink and I had the opportunity, June 9th and 10th, at Bryant High School to attend the AASCD, that's a mouthful, Whole Child Summit. AASCD is the Arkansas Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development. And so there was a two-day summit, and we got to go to some really, really great sessions, dealing with all kinds of things from culture, new legislation, learning about inclusive practices, executive functioning skills, all kinds of topics. But the best session was the one that Ms. Fink led. And Ms. Fink had the opportunity to present about our kindergarten jumpstart program and the corresponding parent university that goes with kindergarten jumpstart. And I will tell you, I was there just as a helper. I literally passed out the papers. But Ms. Fink did a phenomenal job, to the point where every person in there, and I'm not over-exaggerating, every person in there repeatedly said, this was the best session of the entire summit. I learned so much. I cannot wait. I didn't realize this was actually a thing that could be done. I cannot wait to go back and implement this within my community. Can we continue to collaborate? I'm gonna tell them to put you on the agenda every year. I mean, it was, it was all the things. And so when you think about kindergarten jumpstart and kindergarten readiness, and you think about the challenges, right? The challenges of just learning the procedures and rules of school, or how to even stand in line to walk down the hall, or all of the screenings that need to be done to ensure that children are being served appropriately, and all the parent support that takes place. Having the opportunity for kindergarteners to come and practice kindergarten in a fun and supportive way a week before school starts. We're going into year three, and it has been a massive game changer in our district. So if any of you want to walk kindergarten with us on the first day of school, we would love for you to come, because you will be able to see what a tremendous impact kindergarten jumpstart has on the first day and the first week of school. And so, yeah, Ms. Fink did a great job, and we really enjoyed the opportunity to be there with colleagues from all around the state. So thank you for your time. And does anyone have a question for me? All right. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Good evening, school board. Dr. Cleveland, Ms. Smalling. That was a wonderful update, and that's a good segue for what we get to do, which is we get to tell the great stories of Springdale Schools, and I'm very, very proud to do that. Tonight, I get the honor of honoring our communications team. The Springdale Schools Communications Office earned nine national awards from the 2025 NSPRA organization. That's the National School Public Relations Association. And trueness to education, we love our acronyms. And they receive thousands of submissions from across the country, and they honor the best communications across the country. And we were very blessed to have nine. I'm very thankful and proud of our team, led by John Cooper, who does a great job. So here's just, if you don't mind, I'll just list these off to you. Hero HARP Staff Member Saves Pupil, that received a Writing Award of Excellence. Everybody will remember this. Unique Student Eclipse Experience, that received a Writing Award of Excellence as well. Our Total Eclipse Movie Poster received a Marketing Award. This year, we rebranded Springdale Today. I hope that you all were able to watch it or listen to it. It's perfect for if you're riding your bike, or if you're driving, you just pop it in your favorite podcast. Mary and Micah have done a phenomenal job as proof for the fact that they won three national awards for Springdale Today. It was the No Contest, the Sisterly Organ Donation, and the Hudson Cis Stars, as we did them, because they were amazing. Thank you, communications. So they won that. And then you mentioned earlier about Archer Learning Center. We do so much work, and our team is so good, that sometimes great videos happen or great content happens, and you just, you keep going. So we looked back at the deadline piece, and Omar in our office had made a video of the 2024 Archer Learning Center graduating class. And just to be in complete transparency, I just forgot about it. And so we brought it up, and we re-watched it. It is, it is awesome. I mean, it just moved you to tears and made you smile and made you proud. And so we submitted that, and that won, and I was very proud of that. And then we won also an honorable mention for Coffee and Chat, Cafe Situ y Chatla, which is our show that we produce in Spanish every week. So I say all that to say thank you. I'm very proud that I have the opportunity to be here, serving the great city of Springdale and the great state of Arkansas. So thank you all for letting us tell the stories of the Springdale School District. Thank you. Mr. O'Nby, I love my job.
You love each other.
Love my job. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Dr. Cleveland, I hate to follow up that act, because this is so not inspiring, comparatively speaking.
It is inspiring.
It is inspiring. I do have on the financial report, it is very inspiring that we have already exceeded our budgeted revenue for tax collections. So that is inspiring. We are effectively on target where I anticipated that we would be this time of year. Of course, the business office is working like little bees, trying to get all of the payrolls completed for the end of the year and make sure everything's tidied up by June 30th. And then, of course, we will enter kind of that period 13 of no man's land, where we're making adjustments and making sure that we are in compliance with all of the regulations that we have. So you'll also note that, of course, in May, we had our final bond payment. You know, we pay that once a year. We have interest twice a year. And so that was completed. And then I also have the check register there for your review. Do y'all have any questions?
Can you have any information regarding Title I, especially two and seven?
I really don't. I know, my understanding is that they, the federal government wants to have decisions made and a budget approved, like immediately after the fourth. Kim Glass was in my office yesterday briefly. I think that the state feels like our Title I will be what we had last year, other than maybe some adjustments due to population, which is the population of the area based on census. Title II, I believe that she told me that the state felt like we might be getting those funds and that they're doing some work on allocations. So all this to say that hopefully by our next board meeting in July, we'll have better information. I know that I've listened partially in on a national Zoom that they had yesterday, talking about the, how Medicaid might impact with some of the changes they're wanting to make toward being eligible for Medicaid, how that might kind of trickle down and affect our students as far as eligibility for free and reduced lunch. And so I, it's, it's...
Direct certification?
Yes, sir. That's on direct certification. So it's interesting to me how, you know, like you have a grandparent that has been responsible for taking care of a child after school while their parents work. With the Medicaid changes where now their eligibility, I think they have to be 65 instead of 60, which means they might have to go back into the workforce, which plays into now who takes care of the child after school, which could cause food insecurities for the grandparent that could lead to sickness. I mean, it's just, it's just a cycle. And it's, they're really trying to do a push to let our federal lawmakers understand how important this is, because it trickles down, you know, from what you think only impacts adults and older adults, how it affects our children. So.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Anybody else entertain a motion?
My commission that we approve the May financials as presented.
A motion by Mrs. Cook, and a second by Mrs. Creek to approve the May financials as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item, I have five resolutions for, to seek approval for related-party vendors. I'm gonna go through them. If it's agreeable with the board, I'd like to go through them one at a time. So the first one that I have that's in your packet is for Melissa Henry. She has Catering Unlimited. She's a certified teacher for our school district, and she and her husband co-own this business. From time to time, we accept bids for catering services. Estimated amount of the contract can vary from 2,500 to 6,000 per year, depending on what activities are going on at the district. Budget constraints necessitate purchasing these services at competitive prices. And so if approved by the board, this contract would be available from June 16th of 2025 until June 15th of 2027.
Do you want to make a motion on each one of these?
Yes, I think that's what we need, is on each individual one.
I'll make a motion to approve the, approve related-party transaction for Ms. Henry and Catering Unlimited.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hutchinson, and a second by Mrs. Creek to approve the related-party transaction with Melissa Henry. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Next.
The next one that I have is, I see I've got a typo, is Mr. Joshua Jenkins. He's assistant principal at Springdale. He has a minor daughter, and so the business is actually registered in his name. And so it's Treats on the Streets by Amelia. And so this contract is a limited contract due to some changes in state legislation that added to the consideration of related parties and administrative staff that has purchasing authority. They have added principals, assistant principals, and curriculum directors. And so this is gonna be a limited contract just from June of 2025, as of today, through the end of July of 2025, I mean, July 31st, 2025, because those laws will change in August. So we're just doing a limited contract just to get through the end of this school year.
Make a motion to approve the related-party transaction for Josh Jenkins.
Second. A motion by Mrs. Creek, and a second by Mr. O'Nby to approve the related-party transaction for Joshua Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Are you gonna have to come back and log us and do that again?
We're still looking to see exactly what the legislation, they haven't set out all the rules yet for that. So it's possible that if, if we see that he could be eligible, once all the rules are passed, then we may bring it back to extend that contract.
It's likely it could be prohibited.
It's likely that it could be prohibited. So as cautionary, we're just doing it until that comes into place.
It appears that there are no exceptions.
So. So the next one is for Abigail Livingston. She's a substitute for the district. She provides program decorations on an intermittent basis. Again, budget constraints necessitate purchasing products and services at competitive prices. This would be a two-year eligibility from June 16th, 2025, to June 15th, 2027.
Entertain a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the related-party transaction for Abigail Livingston.
Second.
So a motion by Mr. Hutchinson, and a second by Mrs. Cook to approve the related-party transaction for Abigail Livingston. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
This one is for John Stewart. He is also a substitute teacher for Springdale School District. He provides services scoring mock essays for AP US History at a fair and reasonable price. Again, budget constraints necessitate purchasing services at competitive prices. This would also be for two years for the period June 16th, 2025, to June 15th, 2027.
Entertain a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the related-party transaction for John Stewart.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hutchinson, and a second by Mrs. Creek to approve the related-party transaction for John Stewart. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The final one is for Karen Wiesbog, and I probably butchered that name, F6 Catering. She's a certified teacher for Springdale School District. She, from time to time, accepts bids for catering services. Budget constraints necessitate purchasing services at competitive prices. The period would be from June 16th, 2025, to June 15th, 2027.
What's the name of the business?
F6 Catering.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the related-party transaction for Ms. Karen. I think we'll draw the last name.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hutchinson, and a second by Mrs. Cook to approve the related-party transaction for Karen Wiesbog. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So a question, that new law that you referenced, does that just have to do with administration, like principals, assistant principals, that kind of stuff? Or what other parties is that?
It is, it's administrator conflicts of interest, and it, what it did is it updated the definition of an administrat- the definition of an administrator and added superintendent or assistant superintendent or his or her equivalent, school district treasurer, business manager, principal, assistant principal, curriculum development, or other individual directly responsible for entity-wide purchasing. So for instance, um, if I wanted to give an example of entity-wide purchasing, that could be Jeremy White, that could be Gina Smith with food service. And so they had, they've added the principal, assistant principal, and curriculum director.
Anybody that has the power to buy stuff can't have a business that provides stuff?
That provides business to the district, yes. And so, and you know, they have a little rubric that you work through and it says, stop, this is prohibited by law and there are no exceptions. So. Any other questions? Thank you.
Let me get a beer so I can see. Jeremy's not here, obviously, but I'll do it for, it's big shoes to fill. I know I don't have his smile or his laugh or any of those things, but I'll, I'll try to go through this. If you haven't been by the PDC, the new one, it's going to be really nice. There are, uh, Mr. Emerson, I talked this morning about potentially maybe having a board meeting there next time, if you'd like, in July, look at that and maybe go through it if you want to. If not, no big deal, we could even tour it, just whatever you want to do. But it's really nice and I think you'd approve it. Um, but they're going to wrap that up, should be by June the 20th. They're going through and doing the punch list items now, but we are, we're tracking really, really well. Dr. Smith went through there today, toured some people through there, and so they're pretty excited about it. It looks good. It feels good. Our, our custodial team did all the polishing of floors. So it's been a, kind of an act of love at the same time. Exterior looks good, windows look good. I'm really proud of it. Of course, we kept the bathrooms as intact as we could, so the trough sinks were there, you know. But, you know, we're not going to spend money we don't have to spend. So anyway, we're excited about it. It's 21, almost 22,000 square feet of space that our community can even use after. So that's the upstairs floor. And if you remember what that used to look like, it had that rubber base. And I think for those that used to work out up there, it was that really thick rubber floor, but it's going to be nice. We're going to be really proud of it. It'll hold 400-plus people upstairs. So. Where's Mr. Miller? I don't know if he was in here, but they're working on the technology in there right now. So thanks to Mr. Miller for helping through all that. The Industrial Arts Building, also known as the old Lock Supply. It's going to be our district, our district Industrial Arts Building. The mason's trying to work on all the CMU walls right now, the bathroom inside our safe room. Uh, what they call the lid is complete on that and they're shoring up all of that to make sure that the safe room is connected and tight. It's our first one to do. So that's a unique experience for us. And of course, we're not really, I'm not calling it a safe room. I'm calling it a hardened space to meet the requirements of the state, so it should be good. The electrician's working all, all the overhead, installing the main electrical gear and MDP power. I'm sorry, I don't know what that acronym is for, so we'll have to wait on Jeremy for MDP, but I should have asked him what that was, but I don't today. It's on my list to ask. But the block mason's working on block filler and all of that. So exterior painting should be starting soon, so you'll see that exterior of that building start to take shape. The entry canopy and the footings are also being prepped to be poured. Overhead doors are being installed. You'll see a lot of things happen really quickly on the exterior. Right now, it still kind of looks rough.
What does the top of a hardened space, what's it made out of?
It's concrete.
Just concrete?
Yeah, it's concrete. And so it's barge always concrete filled and so literally it should last through a tornado. So, so many miles per hour winds. But we're pleased with multi-craft and they're working through running all the overhead ductwork, narrow spaces in there. Of course, there was an old grocery store. I think a lot of people used to go in there, but it should look good. But, uh, we're, we're very pleased with it. We may be opening that building in sections as school starts. You know how we do things. We try to get occupancy a little early if we can. But we'll go on to, uh, oh, there's another picture. Looks pretty good. So when you, if you recall, when you went in there, you saw the moat. Okay, that is now all filled with concrete and that's part of that hardened space, if you recall. Just show some pictures. And of course, any of you are welcome to go into any of our projects at any time. You don't even have to let me know, just go in there. Okay, so Harbor, that's the new turf. It has been installed by Geo surfaces. We also have the net up behind the goalpost. Uh, the band is, the band's, I think, pretty tickled. They don't really have to look at the football anymore. They don't have to dodge the football. The drill team and our Silver Stars, they don't have to dodge it unless the football kicker's really off. The net should, the net should save them. So we're pretty, we're pretty tickled with that. Something you probably will notice if you've been part of our, well, been an attendee at the football program at either school, you don't see that white picket fence anymore. So we've, we've put up black fence and it really vanishes. It, it goes away, you don't see it. So I'm, I'm pleased with that. So those gates are installed. Now there's something here that it's something new for me. It's called an ice bucket patio. It's poured and installed. That's for heat-related illness, so if someone gets too hot. We have these ice bucket areas and we have, you know, we have these things to wear, uh, old tubs that are outside. We also have water that's been installed to where you can actually turn water on, not have to carry it from inside a building and, and put it out there. So a lot of neat ideas that have happened, we've been able to, to add and, and make it a better area. The drink rail fence is also to be installed. That will be on what is the north end. So you know, we have plans to build up and over the top to cover the band area in the future. So we'll have that new drink rail area. We found that people loved that drink rail area over at SHS, right there below the new gym area. So we're going to do something similar at Harbor, not the same, but similar. So it's going to look good. So we're pretty, pretty excited about it. We also removed some of the grass that's on the inside and replaced it with concrete. And so that should make this whole field area maintenance-free. So anyway, the Harbor multipurpose field. Oh, we have another view there. Should be good. Mimics what's over at the baseball field, which looks good. I know we've all talked about the track, trying to get all of that repaired. That track's pretty old now, we're having to resurface that. So the new turf is to be installed, the new rubber track resurfaced is to be installed, and the new black vinyl fence and gates, they're also to be installed on this track area. You can see that Hellstone right there in the background, so if that gives you a good look at where we are. Now we go over to Tyson Elementary. We toured Tyson, what, this last year? And I remember, uh, Mr. Ombi saying, hey, come here, come here, go, go with me, just for a second. So I did and I followed him. He's, he's like, come here. Opened the door. Look at that. What am I seeing? Remember this, Mr. Ombi?
There was a bathroom.
It was horrible. It was horrible. And I hadn't been in a couple of those bathrooms and that gave me a really good reason to go in there and redo these bathrooms. And, um, you know, focusing on some of our older schools and making sure they are just as good and just as quality as our newest schools needs to be a point proven. And which means I need to go in some of the bathrooms, but, uh, you know, we all need to.
I mean, you gotta, no, I'm, I'm in there quite a bit, but really what, what made me think about that was I was talking to the counselor there and she was telling me how many tours she did with parents and kids inquiring about the school system in Springdale. And I thought to myself, that doesn't look very good.
I agree with you. I agree. I agree. Well, here's the deal. I told you about my trauma in the elementary. Bathroom's a pretty important place when you're in elementary. You need a place that you can go to the bathroom in private, right? When you're an elementary kid. That's just the way it is. And, uh, so our bathrooms need to be really private for them. They need to be safe, they need to be clean. And so that's what we're doing. We're also in Tyson Elementary, uh, we're ripping out some of the carpet in some of the other areas, kindergarten area, and making it really clean and refurbishing that and polishing the concrete. So I'm excited about it. We're also abating the asbestos that's over there and putting in new exterior windows on the outside of that. So Tyson, uh, Tyson proper, if you will, from seeing around the road and around the school, will look just as good as the new tower. So it didn't make the cut for the state to, to, um, basically take it away and build a new one. So we have Tyson Elementary and so we're going to make Tyson Elementary as good as, you know, as good as new as we can. And so we've invested some money in there and I think you'll see a major difference. Tyson's an A school and we want to make sure that they have A-quality facilities too. So thank you for that, Mr. Ombi. I appreciated that little bit of a nudge. I know you felt like you shouldn't do that, but you should. That's something you should do and I appreciate that because I didn't know to go in there. So.
Are we doing that in-house or is it?
It's all, yeah, we're doing, we can't do the asbestos abatement, uh, but we did most of it in-house. That's our machine right there. Jeremy basically has a construction company. So the things that we can do, we are doing. The things we had to parlay out, we've done that too.
Are we about done with asbestos issues? Have we cleaned most of that out?
What we can, we are. You know, asbestos is really good stuff as long as it's not-
Not asbestos?
Not, yeah, not out. That's what they call friable, you know? They used it a lot, but once it's disturbed, now you have a problem. And so if you ever need to do any kind of significant work in the facility, you're going to disturb it, you need to have the professionals come in and abate it in the right way. So that's what we do. And they've done that, they sealed the building, they've done the air quality test. No one was allowed in.
If there's enough left, is it something we should get into figuring out how to do ourselves? Would it be worthwhile to train two or three folks to do it?
Well, I've asked that question and Jeremy says, please let us not do that.
That's fine, I didn't know.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of insurance, a lot of liability. Yeah, I didn't hear what she said, but if she said liability, yeah, I think that's- Yeah, I think she's right. So, yeah, I think you probably dealt with that in your line of work too, right? You haven't in older facilities? Okay.
I haven't.
You haven't? Okay. Anyway, that's the report. I hope you can tell Jeremy I did a really good job and he's going to have to work hard next month to-
Be sure to fulfill.
Yeah, that's right. Anyway, any questions? All right, thank you.
Good evening, School Board. Dr. Cleveland, my name is Valerie Hanna. I am the SEA president and an educator here in Springdale. So two more weeks from today, four of our SEA members will be headed to Portland for the National Representative Assembly. And Arkansas has submitted two new MBAs for the national delegates to vote on. Callie and I are actually the authors, one for each of us. Uh, we are excited and nervous to be standing in front of thousands of educators from every state to defend our requests, but we thought we'd give a special thank you to you guys for letting us practice up here every month for the last couple of years. So, uh, we were disappointed to find out that, uh, due to another learns consequence, that we will no longer be allowed to participate providing lunch for the new teachers during back-to-school. Uh, we know that that had, that being in that space was a privilege and we hope that in the future, we will be able to do it again. For July's, uh, School Board meeting, Callie and I will be representing Arkansas at a different conference, Leaders for Just Schools in Baltimore. We will try to get a representative here for us. However, we would appreciate your forgiveness if we can't find a educator in the middle of summer to show up for, you know, a school board meeting. But we are excited, uh, to engage in this program that we have been already putting work into, examining and discussing our own implicit biases with other educators across the nation in this current political landscape. As it pertains to education, we are eager to collaborate with our cohort and learn ideas, strategies, and programs that have been having success in other places. And we would love to present what we learned this summer to all of you, the district, admin, and the board, uh, at some point after we return from that, um, to bring back those amazing ideas for Springdale's consideration or just to build upon. So that's all we have for this summer, or for the front end of summer, so thank you.
Enjoy your trip. Enjoy your trip.
Yeah. I, I, yeah, definitely taking pictures. I think I, I, we're going to see both sides of the United States, basically. So I think it'll be a fabulous time. Very exciting.
We have one patron who has signed up, uh, I believe it's Kristen Mercado. If you would like to come to the podium. While you're on your way up, I will, um, read our guideline for public comment just as a reminder. By signing in and speaking for the board, you agree that no item will be discussed that would operate to prejudice the board concerning a student or personal matter that could come before the board for disciplinary or, or employment considerations or that is in conflict with other district policy or law. Please not use any student or personnel names. You understand the board will not respond during the meeting. Failure to abide by this agreement will forfeit your right to speak before the board. You may begin, you have two minutes.
I understand, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Cleveland and members of the board. My name is Kristen Mercado. I come before you tonight as a mother, veteran, and former police officer. In my experience, I have witnessed the very evil that lurks around every corner in our communities. We live in a world where you can no longer tell a sheep from a wolf. They disguise themselves by volunteering, donating money, coaching sports, attending church. They smile, they serve, they win our trust. But behind closed doors, there are secrets, dark, horrifying secrets that prey on the most innocent of all, our children. We cannot afford to be naive. We cannot afford to assume that the most charismatic, well-liked, represent, excuse me, respected individual isn't capable of harming a child. When an individual is served a search warrant on their residence for evidence of CSAM, child sexual assault material, that means there is at least one detective that has spent months investigating the suspect and searching digital forensics for evidence of this crime. I spoke with Internet Crimes Against Children Detective on May 13th, 2025, pertaining to a CSAM investigation. During that conversation, the detective provided me with a startling statistic from Dr. Michael Burke. Approximately 70% of men charged with CSAM have already had an undetected hands-on offense with a child. Without going into detail about the situation that occurred at Rollins SOI, I am urging this board to take immediate action to review, revise, and implement strict district policies that directly address how many, excuse me, how administrators notify, report, and respond to suspected child predators. We need leadership that doesn't flinch in discomfort, but instead stands firm and asks hard questions. Leadership that will not tolerate blind spots in protection. This is not about exclusion, discrimination, defamation, or offense. This is about protection of our children, accountability, and responsibility. Our children deserve nothing less than the safe environment we can possibly give them. I would like to close with Sound of Freedom quote, "Over 2 million children a year are being sucked in the deepest recesses of hell. Trust me, if we, if we do nothing, their pain is going to spread and spread until someday it's going to reach the likes of you and that's a nightmare you will never wake from." Dr. Cleveland, members of the board, it has reached the likes of you. Thank you for your time.
So that brings us to our executive session. We will go into executive session to review the superintendent goals for fiscal year '26.
Ready to call the UTEC call? I will call our meeting back to order. We have miscellaneous items, item K. Any questions?
I'm close to the jury.
You need the jury?
Okay, don't run off.